Making a noise.
Usually, yeah. So maybe if everybody mutes their, apart from Deborah, mute their microphone if they're not speaking. That should be how it works. Can, I mean Julie, can you see that you are centre screen?
Which Julie are we talking about? Julie D'ath or Julie Ashton?
We were Julie D'ath. Now Ollie has arrived.
Yeah.
So.
I think, yeah, I don't know why it moves around.
No. Anyway, it's moving around, just so everyone knows. We're all getting the same thing. All right. So, Ollie, we are just doing the apologies and Peter Halbert, Michael Anderson, Monzali's resigned.
And that said, otherwise we're 15.
Yeah.
With James and Warwick.
Okay. Warwick and James on now?
They're coming. I don't know if they can hear us.
Okay. All right. Well, let's carry on. So that's one. Ollie, just because you've come in just now, have you got the agenda?
Yeah, I've actually been, I've been here since we started.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So you have.
I'm gonna mute.
Said about the.
I'm just gonna mute myself. I'm gonna mute myself again so I don't keep appearing.
Okay, fine. Right. Item two. The full council meeting. So Deborah's really got some things to say about this. So I'll mute myself, Deborah, and you carry on on this.
Okay. So am I just, because the decision making by email is, I'm finding it incredibly challenging in trying to collate all the responses that are received, then send it back out, and then find that there's still areas where there's some, there isn't sort of an agreed kind of end decision. So I just felt that, and it doesn't give me clarity in order to be able to continue to move forward, feeling like I have confidence in the decisions that the council has made. So I just, there's two or three decisions from the email round robin that went out after the meeting was cancelled last Monday, that I just wanted to get, you know, a show of hands to say, yes, we have agreed to all of these. And then I feel confident and comfortable, even if things have kind of moved on a bit. I just, that's what I was hoping I could have from this. So the first item is the reallocation of funds to a grant fund, because there was the £10,000 that was recommended by the FMP committee out of the General Reserve. And then there was another £10,000 that the finance officer had identified as underspends from the current financial year, which were initial funds that we felt could be reallocated towards our response to the coronavirus situation. And part of that was £5,000 suggested to be put into a sort of a pot of money to cover off the council's expenses, out-of-pocket expenses, for, you know, just dealing with the situation, both in terms of working from home and, you know, leaflet printing and sort of various other, setting up the database, setting up the website, various other miscellaneous items that, you know, we wouldn't have normally had to pay for. And I'll be also asking you to consider putting some more money into that, sort of at item six. But just for the moment, I just wanted to get agreement on that agenda item. And I don't know if you all happy, just, could we just have a show of hands of those who are in agreement with that?
Could I just say something there, Deborah? Because what I think you're saying, but correct me if I'm wrong, is that we are allocating £25,000.
No.
Assuming six comes. No, number six.
No. Twenty thousand pounds, £20,000 in total, with £5,000 of that allocated to their sort of unexpected expenses, or unbudgeted expenses, and £15,000 of that to the grant fund. But we're going to have to relook at that, because, you know, we've been overtaken by events, as usual.
Yeah, okay. And I mean, I'm happy to go with that, too. I just wasn't clear that it was, that seems fine to me. And I think that is what we all felt was appropriate. Anyway, I'm going to mute myself so we can do a show of hands.
Can I just be clear? We're talking here, item A, 2A, and item six?
Or.
Twenty thousand?
Can we come back to item six? I think I'd just like to get the original agreement just ratified here, and then come back to item six, if that's okay.
So that's £15,000 we're talking about?
No, we're talking of a total of £20,000, £10,000 from the General Reserve, and £10,000 from underspends is being reallocated to our response to coronavirus, with £5,000 of that allocated towards our expenses.
Yeah, which was, and I'm with you, Mick. That was what I wanted to clarify. So it's £20,000 in all.
Yeah.
And when we get to item six, we're discussing allocating five of that as listed there. Okay. So how do we do a show of hands, then? It sounds like Yasmin is the expert on all of this. Oh, I'm not at all.
Okay.
You've got to eat him.
So I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. Julie, have you got a hand up? I can't see. 14. Yeah, I think that's, I think we'll take that as unanimous. Thank you.
Andy, talking here. Have you noticed that if you have the list of participants, you have an option to raise your hand and lower your hand? If people can see my listing, they'll put their hand up. So that's a good way of doing it.
Ah.
You'll probably have a recording of that having happened. So I'll.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Useful way of taking a vote. That's why I hadn't put my hand up, because I was expecting you to explain that.
Well, I hadn't figured that one out.
Okay.
I only started using this today, so. And I was trying to work out how to do that. But I'm not, I'm still gonna have to have a bit of practice with it. So, sorry. Whose phone is that?
Calling me about the hanging baskets.
Oh, is it? Right. Okay.
I'm turning on mute.
Okay. Back to you, Rachel.
How about this? This, if we do that?
Yeah. What I found was that not everybody had access to that. So that's, for those who don't know, that's in.
Okay.
In the bottom of your screen, when you hover the mouse over, you get a pop-up, and there's a whole load of icons. And on the right-hand end, there's one called reactions.
Okay, I'm on iPhone.
Right, okay.
For that reason, I haven't got that.
Right. But it's the reactions that would allow you to then use the thumbs up.
Yes, that's what I did, haven't I?
Yeah. So that, I don't know, has everybody got the reaction?
I don't have that, no, because I'm on my phone.
Right.
Chris, I think you were able to do that. Can you see it?
Shall we not just do it by raising our hands physically, because it's just easier?
It isn't, actually. It's really hard to tell who's got their hands up and who hasn't.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
So how do we do it?
So if you're on a computer, the bottom of the window that is this meeting, if you hover your mouse over the bottom, there's a little pop-up bar. And it starts at the left-hand end with mute and stop video, and, you know, various different icons. You found it?
On the iPad, it's top right.
No, I'm looking on a PC.
Yeah, so it should be right at the bottom. If you just hover your mouse over the bottom of the window that is this meeting.
Mm-hmm. Let's enlarge it.
On an Android phone, it's on the bottom right-hand corner where it says more. You click on more, and I can see it now.
Okay. So you should have a reactions tab.
I've got mute, and then I've got a little arrow, which gives me select a microphone, speakers.
Keep it going, all the way to the right. You should have a little tab there that says
Oh, choose virtual, no, video settings. Reactions, got you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if you click on that, it gives you the option to wave or to do a thumbs up.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
We do a thumbs up when we're voting.
We don't have a thumbs down, though.
No, no thumbs down.
There isn't thumbs down.
All right, sorry. Let's hand back to Rachel. We'll carry on with the meeting now.
She's muted. She's muted.
Oh, sorry. Deborah, are we done with two, then?
We're done with 2A.
Okay. So 2B, you wanted to talk about that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, I'm happy to speak about it. You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay.
But when we discussed it, I understood that you said that the other organisations or somebody has said that the New Market Festival could run a grant fund, and people would apply to them. And when things have moved on a bit, we can deal with that, but we don't really deal with it, need to deal with it now. But the New Market Festival is, in your view, an appropriate organisation to be dealing with grants. But correct me if anything I've said is not accurate. I will mute myself.
Okay, yeah. No, that is, that is the information that came to me today. But I don't see any harm in just agreeing the policy and just agreeing a figure for a hardship fund. And then if for some reason the New Market Festival is slow in getting set up, and, you know, the Day Centre comes to us in absolute desperation, we've still then got the opportunity to support them, because we've agreed the grant fund policy and the amount, because which was left sort of blank in there for a hardship fund. So.
Yes, sorry. I thought you'd finished. So in my conversations last week with the Day Centre, they felt that they might at some point need to have the wages of all their people paid. And because they will have different people or fewer people, they thought that, in conversation, that approximately £5,000 or £6,000 would pay the wages of the Day Centre people making all these meals for vulnerable people. And that was what they indicated they probably would need. Now, I probably don't think that we need, and personally, I don't think that we need to put more money than the £20,000 we've already got. But I'm happy, because I think we could, I don't think we need to give money to the grant fund now. I think that the New Market Festival is very reputable, and I can't think that anybody wouldn't think it's a good idea. Deborah thinks it's a good idea. And so I'm not sure we need to give any, but a figure. But if we were to give a figure, I would have thought somewhere in that region, so that if necessary, we could give money to pay the wages of the people making all these meals at the daycare centre, the Day Centre. Okay. So Deborah, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think it's, I think we need to be clear the difference between funding, providing funding support to keep an organisation going, and supporting them in their activities, and a hardship fund, which is what I'm specifically talking about. And that's the figure that I've left blank in the grant fund policy, because I wanted councillors to decide for themselves what was an appropriate amount. I mean, to give you an example of what I mean by hardship fund. So Will phoned me on Friday and said, I've had a referral for somebody in New Market. They've just moved into an Orbit Housing Association property last, a month ago. And although their council tax and rent is paid, their benefits didn't get paid into their account today. This was on Friday. And they've got £0.22, and they've got no money to put money on the electricity meter. And, you know, it was a genuine case of hardship. And Will referred that to the Day Centre, who provided them with some emergency funds and got them, and also worked with Orbit Housing, and sort of got their electricity sorted out, and they've got them emergency food and things. But it's that kind of a hardship fund, where the Day Centre have identified a severe need of vulnerability, but they don't have the financial resources to be able to support that individual when that need is identified. And that's what I would see as being the opportunity for a hardship fund to help those most vulnerable in our community. I don't see it as something that we should be doing ourselves, but I do see it as being something that I think there's going to be quite a demand on as we move forward. And Chris would like to speak.
Yeah, I think this is a very real issue that could come up. And I would imagine we would need between £5,000 and £10,000 in that pot. Because if the situation develops, there'll be people, I know people who aren't getting paid from work, self-employed people, who won't be able to pay for food. I believe between £5,000 or £10,000.
So I wonder whether we'd sort of, you know, look at a figure now and then review it as and when it's required to be reviewed. I mean, at the moment, we've only got, actually, probably by the time the end of this meeting, we're actually going to have, only have £10,000 at the moment to be able to consider giving in any form of grant, whether that's a grant for supporting an organisation or for the hardship fund. But I do think that's something that, you know, there is still open to us as a council to review in, you know, in the coming weeks, as we need to. Andy, is that a hand up, because you'd like to speak?
It is, yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. So let's try this. Can everybody read what's on my screen there, or not?
No.
I'll read it to you. So it's from Mark Edmondson, who basically is the festival committee. And it says, Andy, I've just authorised the immediate release of 2,500 to the Day Centre, 500 more than they requested, so they can support and feed the elderly and vulnerable during this awful crisis. More funds will be made available if needed. Just thought you should know. He sent me that last Wednesday. Now, one of the things that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention, you may or may not be aware of this, but at the weekend, Suffolk County Council launched a helpline. The number is 0800-876-6926. Rachel and I, being the county councillors, were made aware of it. And today, I phoned the number to understand how it works. And I think they've been advertising it on the radio as well. So you basically phone up, and you've got three options. You can identify yourself as being in its which borough, East Suffolk or West Suffolk. So I identified myself as West Suffolk. And I basically got put through to West Suffolk Council and their families and community team, which Will Wright is involved in. And he's sort of been the architect of the system that we have. And they were able to send out food parcels to the value of £35, which was a mixed parcel. And you could have either a meat option or a veg option. So I think what we partly done is reinvent the wheel. It's a good job we did. It's better to have two wheels than no wheels. But there actually is a facility out there that will deal with hardship. And I think we've maybe set ourselves up to deal with it. But the reality is, what we should be concentrating on is the things that Lucy at the Volunteer Network identified, picking up shopping, posting mail, friendly phone calls, dog walking, delivering meals, bringing bins in and out, urgent or non-urgent prescriptions, that type of thing. Because then, our money goes a long way in doing that. But if there already is a system in place at another council, West Suffolk Council is actually, you know, funding some of these things, we actually, as I say, we've reinvented the wheel. The wheel already exists in another council that's got a lot more money than we have to be able to spend on this. I just want to make that point. You know, what we've done is fantastic. But when it comes to hardship, it's really the town council that should have to be picking up the bill. It probably isn't going to ever get the money back. I suspect that West Suffolk Council would be able to put a bill in to the government and get all that money back. I mean, it's, last week at Cabinet, we were talking about putting 30 million together for this. And I think that's already gone up to something like 66 million. So, you know, it's a massive sum is being put forward. And, you know, great what we're doing, but I think we are, we're perhaps thinking that there are some gaps that we need to fill. And it's actually already kind of been set up a little bit after us. It came through at the weekend, and we're kind of nearly a week ahead, which I think is fantastic. And we do need local people to deliver, you know, they're the people that are on the ground, they're our local volunteers. So what we've done is brilliant, but I can't see that we should be, you know, potentially paying somebody's mortgage or, you know, bigger bills. I had a taxi driver contact me today through the helpline. He wasn't really after anything on the list. He was after money, you know, to support his family. And I don't know what we did with that. But I would have thought the best thing to do would have been to refer him to that 0800 number, where he would get the help that he needs. Anyway, I'll stop ranting now. I think I've said enough.
Okay. Mick, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, it was interesting. I had a hectic helpline session today. And I got an officer from West Suffolk saying, have you set up that hardship fund yet? And it was actually the situation that Deborah was speaking about. Now, I totally agree that the larger financial amounts do fall on West Suffolk and Suffolk County Council. But I think we should have something there for an emergency to be paid through our partner organisations, because I don't think we are in a position to judge hardships. We need to get referred to and requests from our partner organisations within New Market. But a very local fund at, and not a very high level, I think would be a wise thing to do. Now, if we don't have to use it, well, there's no harm done. But I would go for the £5,000, keep that in the hardship fund, just in case, so that no one is put in a position where they don't nothing, no money, and can't spend money on any food. That's what I, I think we should go for the £5,000.
Agreed.
I would agree with you, Mick, that it's better to have two options than none at all. And the biggest danger is that somebody falls through the loop, drops through between the two options. And we need to make sure that nobody actually falls through that.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Hang on, sorry. Sorry, one at a time. Tom had his hand up first of all. Well, if anybody else wants to speak, I'll just, if you put your hand up.
I agree with the fund, because obviously I dealt with somebody today that rang up that had no money. And we had to put her in touch with a food bank. And the food bank, we're going to deliver a parcel to her. But that was a lady that had two children that had no money at all today. So, yes, okay, there's a food parcel that can come from West Suffolk. But going forward, that's not probably going to help her for a few days, whereas at least we may be able to give her some financial input.
Anyone else? Andrew? Andrew, do you want to speak?
Yeah. They have speeded up the universal credit system, I gather. So I've got a contact with universal credit. And the computer system, that is a bit complicated. But it's an avenue that could be pursued.
Yeah. I think the problem arises when somebody's applied for universal credit. They're waiting for it to come in, and there's a delay of maybe a week or something. And then they haven't got any money in between the moment of applying and the action.
They can go for advances on it. It depends whether they know how to work the system.
Yeah. Well, it'd be a bit unreliable.
I still think we need that contingency.
Right. Ollie, did you want to speak?
I was just gonna add that. I think it's, given that it's coming from, did you say it's coming from reserves from last year?
So there's two, there's two pots of £10,000. One is general reserves from the current, well, just general reserves. That's what we just have.
Right.
Sitting in our reserves. I mean, appreciate that ideally, we wouldn't be tapping into them, because they're not as high as they would like to be. But I think everybody would accept that these are extenuating circumstances. And the other £10,000 is from underspends in the current financial year.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, I was just gonna say, I just think, given where the money's coming from, I know that we are supposed to save that money. But the reason is for, as you say, extenuating circumstances, and these are extremely, I don't think it can get any more extenuating than this. And I think it would be fantastic if, even though there's funds available from the wider council, if we show as a local council that not only is money there, but people will have confidence in their local council if we're seen to be there for them, as well as, you know, practically being there for them. So I think it's just, yeah, small price to pay to give people confidence in their local town council.
Chris?
I propose £5,000 to go into item 2B, to approve the grant fund policy.
So anybody who would like to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Can we have a vote using our hands, please?
Shall we use our little reactions?
Yes, please.
So we can do the thumbs up.
James, do you, are you abstaining? Ollie, you haven't voted. Oh, yes, you have. Okay, one. Yep. So I think it wasn't quite unanimous, but I think, you know, the majority of people were voting in favour of that. Thank you.
Okay, that's great. All right. So then we, and what are we doing that with that, Deborah? Are we hanging on to it, or are we giving it now to the, are we allocating it within our own funds and not actually giving it to the, to the festival people? What?
Well, this is specifically identified as a hardship fund, as opposed to money to support an organisation. So I think perhaps one of the suggestions was that we could set up a steering group that could, to look at, to sort of work with, you know, to work on the coronavirus response from the town council. And maybe one of the things they could be tasked with doing is looking at whether we need to do anything with that money at the moment, whether we grant it to an organisation to help out hardship cases as they come along, and which organisations that should be, and make recommendations, and perhaps bring that back to the council again, you know, because we could, we could agree to meet, you know, again, save.
Can you hear, Deborah? This is Warwick.
Yes, I can hear you, Warwick.
At the moment, everything I'm getting is all broken up.
Is it? Are you not, are you not hearing this at all? Warwick, are you there? He seems to have disappeared again. James, are you hearing us? James, can you hear us?
I'm guessing some people.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's there. But, and I can see his video, but he's not hearing me.
I don't think he's enabled his microphone.
Right. I can message him directly.
All right, okay, yeah, do that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I think we're clear on that. So £5,000, which seems very sensible.
And, sorry, just to clarify, sorry, Rachel, to interrupt, just to clarify, that we would pass on the decisions about what to do with that to the steering group to report back to council. Are you happy with that? Sorry, you just muted yourself.
Sorry. The, yes, I'm okay about that. The only thing is, I'm just very clear that we need to be very clear that we need to give that money to an organisation and not start doling it out.
No.
Because we'll get ourselves into fearful trouble. And we won't do as good a job as an organisation. Okay, so I think.
It's not our place to do that. It's just our place to decide which organisation is best placed to manage it. And it might be that we split it between organisations. Could be the Voluntary Network and the Day Centre, or the Jockey Club, that are doing a sort of a similar initiative. But, you know, investigate it.
All right. So let's move on to 2C, then, to approve the scheme of delegation. It's back to you again.
So I set up quite a robust scheme of delegation, because. Sorry, somebody's talking.
Oh, I did, I tried to do that.
Oh, I'm gonna have to, it's Warwick. I'm just, I've just had to mute him. So the scheme of delegation is set up so that we can still continue to function as a council. And I've tried to set it up in such a way as it kind of, it functions in a similar way as if the council was still able to meet. So that currently, financial regulations give delegated powers to the TCM to spend up to £1,000, committees to spend between £1,000 and £5,000, and amounts over £5,000, up to £10,000, sorry, over £5,000 to be referred to council. And that's obviously within sort of budgeted expenditure, except in a dire emergency. And then the TCM has powers to spend as much as is needed to sort of deal with an emergency, you know, the roof's caved in, and we need to get emergency contractors in to secure the building, for example. But under these circumstances, I've tried to set it up so that we meet like this, we achieve a consensus as to what, so that the council is giving direction as to how it would like to proceed. And then I can use the delegated authority to proceed with whatever it is that has been agreed. And then, in the fullness of time, when we are able to meet formally, legally constituted meeting, then we can, to make resolutions, just to confirm all the decisions that we've made in this way. But it still allows us to function as a council. So really, I just need a formal approval to agreement on that scheme of delegation, please.
I'll propose that.
Anybody second?
I second.
Okay, thank you. And all those in favour, could we please vote on your?
Can I just say, sorry, I was trying to attract attention.
Sorry.
I'm not, I'm not against the scheme of delegation. And certainly, if we can meet like this regularly to agree items, particularly more expensive items. I was concerned with the original document, which gave some delegated. I was concerned with the original document, which gave some delegated powers to the F and P committee. And are we not within this agenda, looking at those points?
Yes, we are, we are reviewing, agreeing the membership of a finance and policy working party. But in the meantime, it's just, it's the actual scheme of delegation, what, what you're delegating to me and in what form that I want to, that I'm seeking agreement on at the moment.
Okay.
So, so on, on that basis. Sorry, can I have, can I have a vote on the scheme of delegation then, please? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Yeah, I think that's nearly unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we're moving on to item four. So item three says to set up a steering group to work with the acting town council manager on the council's response to coronavirus, including the helpline and grant fund. Deborah and I have had a little chat about things and one of my big concerns about Deborah, which perhaps was lost in translation, was that Deborah, I'm responsible, as some of you will know, for Deborah's health, wellbeing and all of those things. And to me, if I didn't say Deborah couldn't work 67 hours a week, which was the previous week, I'm not doing my job and I've been very concerned about Deborah. So we've had a chat, we've sort of hopefully come out the other side in most ways. And we all need to help Deborah to make sure that she isn't doing so much work that she's working hours that I personally feel are detrimental, which is how we got back to this working 24 hours a week, which is three days, which is what's in the contract. So the purpose of the steering group is so that we can, and Deborah, you feel, I'll change over to you in a second. The purpose of the steering group is so that we, which will include me, because I am the mayor and therefore the chair of the council, we will have people who can help Deborah do work so that she isn't put in the position of having to do, you know, at the lowest level, and this isn't to denigrate anybody because we're all trying to do it, so that she doesn't have to do things like answer calls on the helpline and everything else. So that's the purpose of this steering group while we're all in this sort of lockdown or semi lockdown situation. So Deborah, do you want now then want to move that on? I'll mute myself.
Yeah, it's just really just so that I've got like a team of councillors that are working with me to make sure that, you know, we're doing the best we can for the community in terms of our response to the coronavirus and, and looking at the grant policy. Just so that, you know, if, if the worst happens and I go down, there's still a team of people that is up to speed as I am and can sort of keep, continue to keep the ball rolling. And even so, I might even be able to have the odd day off. Be rather nice on day 15, right at the moment. I can't remember the last time I had a full night's sleep, although I did sleep quite well last night.
And that is my point, Deborah.
I know, I know. And that's my point about the steering group to support me. Mick, you would like to speak?
Yes, I, I do, do think it's important that there is a group, a small group of councillors. And we want all to try and make it representative for the whole council that can offer day-to-day support and also discuss with Deborah the longer term implications, whatever they might be. And it's very difficult to look forward into the future. And I would, I would therefore propose that that group is, is made up of councillors Appleby, Border, Caesar, myself, Kirby and Kirk with councillor Hood as the, the town mayor, to make seven councillors. I think, I hope everyone agrees that that would be representative of the council. And we, I think, could work together to help Deborah. That's the most important thing, to offer support to Deborah so it doesn't all fall on her shoulders. And some of that decision-making can be discussed through with a smaller group of councillors. Much more importantly though, is that we have these sessions to report back what is going on. And I think we need to consider how often we have these meetings.
And I'm happy to second that, Mick. I think that's eminently sensible. So if others who'd like to speak, please speak up.
I, I think that's a wonderful idea. I would propose that the chair of that is, is Tom Kirby.
Well, actually.
Because of the wonderful work he's been doing on the phone lines coordinating.
Yeah, well, I'm going to be the chair because I'm still the mayor and I've discussed that with Deborah. But other people are welcome to be on it.
To vote on that personally, I don't think that's your choice. I think that's what we're meeting here to do is to decide that.
Well, just so you know, it has to be decided by. I'm muted. We have to be quite careful, Chris, on how we are working together. And.
Absolutely.
And Deborah and I have discussed that and I believe she's in agreement.
Can I just come in there, Rachel? I said, I'm not, I don't, I don't believe we actually discussed who would be chair of the steering group. I think I would feel more comfortable if that was a decision that was made by, either by this meeting or collectively or by the steering group itself. Mick, you wanted to speak? And you are, you're muted.
Anything?
Sorry.
Yes. The chair of this group is going to be pretty important because it's got to be someone who not only can communicate to the rest of the council and it also liaising with Deborah. And the chairman has to be someone who can get on easily with Deborah to support her, to recognise when she's over doing too many hours. But most importantly, to be a sounding board of the ideas that Deborah's coming up with that has got us to an excellent position with regards to setting up this community helpline and all the other ways in which Newmarket Town Council has responded to this crisis. I personally believe that that would be better not being you, Rachel, but being someone else. And if Chris, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Ian, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, my concern with this, I mean, it's great that Rachel and yourself have had a conversation. You seem to have been able to iron out some of the issues which were raised in the email from yesterday. But it would still concern me that there is potential for alienation or friction within that relationship. And I think it's best if one, if Rachel is removed from that direct chair of the group and there is somebody else, Rachel obviously to be part of it, but the primary liaison to be somebody else other than Rachel because then it becomes one step removed from the potential areas of friction and disagreement which have been identified so far.
Actually, funnily enough, the more I think about it, the more I'm quite happy with that. Because obviously I've got a lot of other things going on with work and that. But in a way, more important, because I am Deborah's line manager, it means that if there is a problem and Deborah needs to speak to me, she can speak to me in a different sort of way. And hopefully our relationship is moving on in a way that as the mayor, I've got certain responsibilities. As Deborah's line manager, I've got others. And perhaps if you want, Tom, if you want to do this, I'm quite happy for that. I'm going to mute myself. Tom, why don't you speak now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do it, but I would have, I would, in my opinion, I would have proposed Mick to, 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 to chair the steering group because he's, he has a lot more knowledge of Newmarket and the council than I have. Yes, I've helped out with the, the helpline and, you know, we've been busy with that. But there are, there are lots of other things that, you know, I don't have the knowledge of. And, and I think Mick would probably be a better person to liaise with Deborah. I'm quite happy to be there supporting and do as much as I can, and I will do. But I think I would, I would propose that Mick is the chair of that committee.
Chris, you want to speak?
Yeah, Mick.
Can I, can I propose that the committee be made up of councillor Hood, councillor Kirk, councillor Caesar, councillor Kirby, councillor Jeffries, councillor Border and councillor Appleby? I'll leave that to everyone. And the chair be councillor Jeffries and vice chair be councillor Kirby.
I second that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, I second that.
I second that.
Yeah, I, I, this is Warwick, I certainly go along with that. Yeah, yeah.
Will we vote on that?
Yes, please, please do.
All right.
Yeah, that, that's a majority voting. Thank you. So, yeah, so Mick is chairman and Tom is vice. Lovely, thank you.
All right.
Rachel, do you want to move on to the next item?
Yes, the next item is membership of the finance and policy working group for monthly financial reporting. Who is this reporting to, Deborah?
This is the, your officers reporting to the council in the same way they would if the finance and policy committee was meeting.
Right, okay.
And just bear with me, I'm just sending out the, it's taken a while to get here, but it's now arrived. I've got the committee preference sheet, which I'm just sending out to everybody now. Just sort of bear with me quickly.
Shall I read out the membership as I see it on the screen?
Let me, let me just, please just let me send that through. Should now be on its way.
I thought you'd sent it before, Deborah.
No, no, I don't think I had. It should just now be coming through on email.
I think you had sent it, Deborah, because I printed it off tonight.
Oh, did I? Okay, I'm losing, I'm losing.
That's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at preferences.
Sorry.
Would you like me to read it out?
You can do.
Before you, sorry, before you do, Chris, can I just say that my preferences aren't included on there? And I did submit them by hard copy at one of the town council meetings.
Yeah, that, yeah, sorry, we've, we've had a struggle with versions and unfortunately this document was saved on the hard drive of the computer that's in the office. We've had somebody who's not usually using the computer going, Gary's been sort of going to try and download documents. So he might not have the most up-to-date version. But I think you put yourself down for everything but human resources, hadn't you? Ian?
Yes.
Right, so we'll, we'll take it as read that you wanted to be on finance and policy as well.
Yes, please.
Okay. So what I, what I wanted to propose was that in order to perhaps allay the concerns that had previously been raised, that we just accept the membership as per the committee preferences.
Is that including councillor Kirk?
Yes, yes, I would.
Okay, I propose we accept that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with that, yeah.
Shall we vote now?
Yes, please. Okay. That is a majority voting in favour of the membership as per the, the form and, and adding councillor Kirk. Thank you very much. Okay, shall we move on to the next item?
Okay, great. The next one is five updates on the helpline and other initiatives in the town to support the vulnerable in the community. That's you again, Deborah, I think, or is it?
Yeah, well, I was going to ask Tom if he could, would be kind enough to update on this. Fed up with listening to my voice.
Well, as I say, as councillors know, we, we started manning the line, the telephone lines last Tuesday. For two or three days they were actually manic, as Cathy will probably and Ian and Andrew will align to that. I think it was pretty quiet over the weekend of both of them. We had one major issue on Saturday morning that, or Sunday morning, that myself and Andy sorted out. A lady needed to get to hospital pretty quickly and Caroline at the volunteer network summoned the driver within half an hour and she was off to hospital. So that's how the phone line has been working. There's been a few glitches, i.e. adding data and finding out who's been registered and who hasn't been registered when they've, when they've called back. Douglas and Lucy have set up their Newmarket coronavirus helpline. And there's an email address that I've been sending urgent and immediate request to. I know some councillors were sending in some, some of their datas directly to them, which wasn't helpful as such. But I think we've now got that working in our favour. They're understanding what I'm sending to them and they're, they're the emergency and immediate ones. And the other stuff that's, that's just being recorded on the, on the up-to-date data, data register is handy to have. The voluntary network, Caroline and her team have been very helpful. I've been in touch with the food bank a couple of times a day to help people. The day centre have been very helpful. And as I said, the volunteers that Lucy and Douglas have got working for them have been very good. So at the moment, I feel we have done a good job to get where we are. There's probably still a few things we can add to it, but it's, it's evolving every week. And councillors have probably found that for themselves, answering the phone. It's surprising how many vulnerable people we have in the town. And it's certainly opened my eyes to probably moving forward, how much we can probably help them. But I know there's services out there that help them, but it's something we need to probably be very aware of. But I didn't realise we had so many that rely on parents, neighbours, you know, sons and daughters to, to do their shopping for them. And, and if they're not able to do it, then they haven't got anybody. So we, we do have a very important role to play at the moment. But as I said, at the moment, it seems to be working. Sarah's obviously did send out some details today about probably uploading to an Excel sheet. Again, which, which is probably helpful on the day-to-day stuff, on the data sheet. But it's the emergency and the immediate ones that obviously I'm dealing with and I'd like to continue to deal with. So I can spread those to the various networks that we're helping with. So that's all I really got to say at the moment. So if anybody else has anything to add, please do.
Well, I think.
Go on, Sarah.
I was just going to say, I think that we should look at making that Excel spreadsheet available to everyone who's manning the phone line so that they've got instant access to who's registered, what details we already have about people, so we're not duplicating effort. And I realised that a lot of people aren't used to using Excel. I think, you know, we could have a quick training session with, given that everyone's managed to get into Zoom, you know, we can do a screen share right now and say, this is how you'd use it. So we can kind of like do an online training. So how we would do that on the phone line. But yeah, it seems to be going well. And I was talking to Douglas earlier and he's apparently been showing the district council his. So I'm reading what he's calling it at the moment, the ticketing support system to the district council. So he gave a demo today and they were very interested in it because of course a lot of parishes haven't got anything in place yet to do this because we were very quick off the block. I think we're all underestimating how quick we were responding and how much work Deborah has done. That hasn't happened in a lot of areas. A lot of areas have no clue how to handle this at all so far. So, you know, we have, we are quite sort of in a good place at the moment and a lot of work has been done. And I think we just need to keep on with it.
Thanks, Sarah. Mick, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, yes, I played a very small part so far. And I know just from the calls that I had, how appreciative the residents of Newmarket are that the helpline has been set up so quickly. And I think it's now the time to give a vote of thanks to Deborah and to Tom and to everyone else who's worked on this work line. And in such a great response to what is an emergency. So I propose a vote of thanks to Deborah first and the rest of the team.
Here, here.
And Douglas too?
Nah, he doesn't though. No, pass it on.
And, and the black cat, whatever he's called.
Indeed, yeah, sorry about that.
I just wondered if he had an opinion, your cat.
That's a lot of opinions, Ben, I thought.
Andrew, you wanted to speak?
Well, no, I was just going to say thank you to Douglas. I'll be impressed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. Can I just come in there and just add to what Tom has said? We started out with really quite a linear structure, but you know, as the calls for help were coming in, it was becoming, you know, clear that the call handlers, let's call them that, were sort of having so many calls coming in, it was impossible for them to be able to deal with them as they came in. So we just, I felt that it was important to have somebody else in a separate role, a coordinator role, that all of those calls for help were then passed over to Tom, who, because he'd been sort of manning the helpline for several days. He had, you know, a much clearer picture of the sorts of things that we were dealing with. And Ian Kirk has also offered to take on that coordinator role because he's also been covering the lines for as long as Tom has. So and then they can sort of take it in turns, they can decide who's going to do what on which day. So they can have a bit of a break because it is, I know it is really intense. And one of the things that I'm, you know, concerned about for both staff and councillors who are regularly covering the helpline, that actually it's really going to be hard work in the longer term. And I've been talking to Will Wright because he said members of their team have access to counselling to help them to sort of, you know, dealing with some really quite serious safeguarding issues. One of the cases that Will's been dealing with over the weekend has taken hours and hours to try and sort of get the appropriate support in place. So I'm hoping that we might be able to tap into that area of counselling as well to, you know, just to help our staff and councillors to sort of get through the next few months. Because I think, I think, you know, this is almost, I know it's been intense, but I think it's almost the lull before the storm. I think, you know, it's going to get pretty harrowing as we get through this. You know, we need the strength and the support to be able to do this effectively. Also, just to talk a bit about the database, we had a few initial teething problems with it. I've sort of gone back to our database designer who has sort of put some more work into it to help us to have a more functional database because we're sort of trying to get it to do lots of things. But I think, you know, and we also had a bit of issue with data entry. But thanks to Julie, our minute taker, who I discovered as a database administrator and a touch typist, she is now keeping our database up to date. And I just think it was quite, I think it's better to have one individual who's doing the data entry. But the idea was that the whole database would be available to everybody on the helpline so that they could, you know, had access to all the information that everybody else did. But the idea is that when the calls for help come through, that they're referred to the coordinator. I also just wanted to talk about what other organisations are doing in Newmarket. So the Jockey Club have teamed up with Godolphin and Tesco and Newmarket Festival and ourselves and Lucy with her Coronavirus Volunteer Network. And they are, you know, the big issue that we've all been trying to get our head around is how do we deal with the issue of handling money? And the Jockey Club have come up with the idea of a box scheme where effectively somebody phones up and says, we need some shopping. They've got the opportunity to purchase, say, a £20 or a £35 box of food, which contains basic essentials. And, you know, that is, they then, their details are given to Tesco. Tesco will phone up the individual and take their payment over the phone. These are for the people who can pay over the phone. So we've got a sort of a system where we've got a can pay and a can pay. And a can pay includes anybody with cash. Cash is becoming incredibly dangerous to handle because it harbours the virus. So and also, you know, it's a, you know, a very unsecure way of making payment. So we're sort of doing our very best to avoid cash. So if people have only got a cash or a cheque, then we take them down through the can pay route and that's where the day centre and the food bank and the voluntary network all kind of step in and, you know, sort of help. But also I think, you know, the Jockey Club is looking to set up a fund that might help to support. But, you know, it's all early days and everything's all in discussion and everything's changing from hour to hour almost. But, you know, there's some great collaborative work and initiatives going on. And Discover Newmarket have repurposed their two vans to help sort of with deliveries. So this will add into what the voluntary network are doing and, you know, anything else that's going on. In addition to that, in my update email, I mentioned about the website. That, I think, is pretty much where I would want it to be, to be ready to launch. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to check it out. So it's obviously separate from our normal town council website because the normal town council website is really not designed for the sorts of, for this sort of information. So I've tried to set it up so that it's just an information hub, it's a source of information, local, national, regional. What's West Suffolk doing, what's Suffolk County Council doing, what's the latest from the government? What are we, sort of, you know, our social media feeds and sort of populate it with useful information, things to do to keep busy, how to stay safe. You know, you know, contacts and all that sort of thing. It's still a work in progress, obviously. But I would welcome input into the website to make it as informative as possible. But the link was in the update email I sent out last night. So, you know, happy for councillors to have a look and come back with some feedback and see, you know, we can do. And if you're all happy with the website, I'd really like to start promoting, actively promoting it and get it out there as a source of information for local people. And we're also in the process of working with the Jockey Club on drafting another leaflet to be delivered. We're sort of looking at something like a tri-fold leaflet, that's a sort of a two-page, so you've got sort of lots of different information. So sort of just talking about how organisations are responding and what sources of help are available in the community and sort of useful information, maybe an FAQ's page, what's considered essential and not essential. We were on a conference call on Friday morning with, which included the Tesco manager. And he apologised that he'd had to leave to go and deal with an argument that was happening outside the front of the store because on one side he had 500 people queuing, waiting to get in. On the other side, on the left-hand side, he had 200 people who were in the elderly category, where the store was trying to open and, you know, create their specific time allocation for going around the store. And, you know, there's a bit of an argument going on and turned out one of these.
They had a fight, didn't they?
Yeah, a fight.
Fight.
Okay. And one of the elderly ladies was queuing to get her lottery ticket because it was a Friday. So there's a lot, because there's quite a bit of work to do around managing expectations. And, you know, what is essential and what isn't. I mean, was it Tom or Ian had a call today from somebody who said, oh, I just wonder if I could have two limes added to my shop, please?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
Some of them wanted a coke belly.
Oh, did they? So, you know, I think there's a lot of work to be done around managing expectations. So again, you know, it would be quite helpful to have some input into the leaflet, which I'm still waiting for a response from the Jockey Club and others. It's, you know, I've sort of thrown some words together, but I'm not a copywriter, so I've done my best. But anyway, I will shut up now and open up anybody else who just wants to speak.
Could I speak, Debra? I did send you a little message.
Oh, sorry, Andy. Yeah, sorry, yes.
One that needed the limes for his case of Corona, but.
Oh, oh, oh.
Just some feedback. One other thing that happened to me over the weekend, I was on a call and it came to 10 o'clock. And of course, that was my slot and it cut me off. So Debra kindly, on the fly, kind of changed the system so that you get five minutes. So if you're on a call at the hour when you're going to finish, you will be able to hopefully finish that call. Clearly, don't start, don't answer a new call in that last five minutes because you're going to get cut off. I think we need to get a message, an outgoing message on our telephone for the 667 227 because I had quite a few calls today that were nothing to do with the helpline. It was about symmetry and it was about somebody wanting to come and service the fire extinguishers, et cetera. But if we can do that, I think that would be better for tomorrow. Who could go in and, even if you have to go in, but that would be good. And I think we're quite good at making these little mini changes that make things better, kind of almost on the fly. So if anybody else has kind of spotted anything, let Debra know because the thing that I thought helped me very quickly. Just before I finish, I would just make the point that we did a little bit of research. And I know that James wanted to say this point, but he hasn't been able to. That the other towns within what would have been the Old Forest Heath area, so Mildenhall and Brandon, and actually part of the Old St Edmunds, Behave Hill, they don't have any systems at all like we have. So, you know, this really is brilliant, what we're doing. And that's it. Thank you.
What I, the one thing I did just, sorry, Julie, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, can I just say something on the helpline? I wonder if it's possible, within reason, to have designated days and hours assigned. So that, you know, I did a few hours over the weekend, but I've got nothing booked in for this week, although I'm happy to help. And I just think maybe those of us that are doing it, if we know exactly what we're doing on any given day, within the day, it just makes planning other things, I know there's not a great deal to plan, but planning other things, you know, slightly more reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, I've asked Cathy to take over managing the rotor because that was sort of something I ended up doing and, you know, woke up this morning at 6 o'clock and thought, oh, heck, I haven't got anybody booked in to do the helpline yet. So I was sort of done a bit on the fly this morning, but I've asked Cathy to deal with that. I think in some ways, you know, people saying to me, saying to us, well, you know, we can do any time. And then we book a time and then that time doesn't work. So, you know, perhaps it's easier if we could get some indication of what times best suit you. And then we can sort of try and set up a rotor that works for everybody. I mean, I know, for example, John and Sarah can only do 6 to 8pm during the week because they're working during the daytime still from home. So you know, you two are easy as the other people. I mean, Mick's doing a set slot at the moment, sort of 12 to 2, because that works best for him. Ian's been doing 8 to 12, but I'd actually like to give Ian a break because he's been doing it for almost a whole, for a whole week now. So it would be really nice if somebody else was able to take the 8 to 10am slot and then we can perhaps break those sessions up. But it's just a case of getting people slotted in. Yes, Chris?
I, as you know, I emailed you to set up because now my work's finished and I will do the 8 to 10. I put down between 8am and 5pm because that's, I can do that. But if the 8 to 10 slot is in the morning, I'll do that.
Okay, I just need to send you through all the details to get you set up. And I also need to do that for Kevin. So there's two of you to do and I'll try and get that done tomorrow so that you can be set up and go on the schedule. But I'll try and, actually, I'll do that tonight. Kevin, you might just need a little bit of support, possibly, just to get up and functioning, but.
I guess I will, yeah. I need some information, yes, please.
Yeah, okay. So I'll get that set up and then you two can go on the rotor. Yes, Julie?
I'm just happy to carry on with the 2 to 4 slot, if that helps.
Yep, that is very helpful, thank you.
Should we be emailing in to Cathy so that we can all?
Yes, yeah, that would.
That might be better because I know you put me in a slot this afternoon, which was fine actually. Yeah, but so, what I've planned to email in if.
Yep. What I've tried to do is to have two people on each two-hour slot, except for the ones that tend to be a bit quieter, which is sort of 6 to 8. But I actually think the 6 to 8 slot might get, start to get busier, as you know, potentially as things change. But the 8 to 10 slot doesn't tend to be quite so bad, but between 9 and 10 could be worse. So we're just trying to have a cover. What I was hoping to do was maybe to set up a little meeting with the people who have been on the helpline the longest, just to sort of, so we could spend quite a bit of time just going through what's working, what isn't working, what do we need to do to enhance it? You know, what are the main issues that seem to be coming through and just sort of, you know, making sure that we're sort of tightening it up and learning lessons and continuing to improve the function and structure of how it's working. Yes, Kevin?
Just to say, Debra, any time will do, but not 8 to 10. In the mornings will be difficult, but the rest of the time is fine.
Okay.
Anytime, outside 8 and 10.
Okay.
I can fit in. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, okay. So shall we then move on to item 6, which we sort of touched on, Debra?
Sir, excuse me, can I just point one point relating to the last discussion?
Yes, Ian, go ahead.
Just coming back to, it's a great thing that we've got the food parcel system set up, which will obviously help in extremists for people to make sure they've got something to eat and whatever. But there will inevitably be requests for somebody to do shopping for other items outside of that, which might be very important for the individual in concern, for example, cat food, dog food or batteries for a device or whatever. And not for this meeting now, but I do think we need to put our collective heads together, maybe through the Finance and Policy Working Group, to think, see if we can find a way how we can facilitate the purchase of items which are seen to be sort of non-essentials generally, but are essential to individuals, which have fallen outside of the food parcel, the food boxes. I think that's going to be a really pressing issue as we go forward.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you. And I think, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for us perhaps to be working with one of our partner organisations to sort of perhaps try and fill that void, figure out a way to fill that void somehow. I mean, presumably it will come clear what the sorts of things are that fall outside the sort of food box and, but which are commonly requested, such as you suggest, you know, cat food and dog food and, you know, might need baby nappies.
Quite, yeah.
You know, all that sort of thing. That will become clear as we go forward, you know, sort of start to get a clear idea of the sorts of things we might need.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Could I just quickly ask, would it be possible to get a sort of standardised script in place? I mean, obviously we're not doing telesales or anything, but, you know, it would be useful for those of us that don't have quite as much experience about the town voluntary agencies and stuff to have a document that says, that outlines common questions from the helpline and a standard response. So if someone says, I need hot food today, with the actual telephone number for them to call for the day centre and sort of a name to sort of go to, just so that we have it right there, rather than having to go off and research ourselves. And then it might depend on who's taking the call as to what response the person gets. And, you know, we don't want to be saying, oh, we'll just call you back to every single call. It's just, you know, it would be very helpful to have a script in place or a protocol.
Well, perhaps that's something we could discuss if we sort of have a little meeting of those of you who have sort of been.
I think it's the steering committee, why?
Yeah, the steering committee, yeah, the steering committee could look at that. I think one of, the idea was that that's the role of the coordinator is to, you know, you take the details of what it is they need as the call handler passes to Tom or Ian. And they then contact the day centre and the day centre then contacts them or, you know, rather. We are providing on the database, there is a tab for businesses that need.
Okay. I think that's the thing, is because we're not getting visibility of the database. It's, you know, if you're the one actually answering call and you want to be proactive at that point, you can't. You have to just say, thank you, we'll get back to you on that kind of thing. And then you have to contact someone else who's going to contact someone else at day centre. And then it will, the time delay between, and hoping that they get that information. When if you could just say, you can contact this organisation directly, but we'll pass on your details anyway, you know, that's, that would be more helpful.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I do think there's probably better discussed in a meeting of the steering.
Yeah, sorry.
And, you know, Tom and Ian who have been, you know, handling the most calls, is sort of probably a better place to kind of, you know, help us to devise a system that works best and is flexible as it needs to be. But, you know, perhaps we can just agree by email on a date to call and have a Zoom meeting to talk about, you know, all of these issues.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so are we happy to move on to the next item then?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we've touched on this. Debra, do you want to go through? Six, council expenses for homeworking.
Yeah.
Most response.
So I asked Cathy if she could just cobble together sort of a list of the items that we've spent so far out of that budget. Obviously, it's covering off things like staff overtime, my overtime, my extra hours over what I would normally have been contracted to work. And all sorts of miscellaneous items, the website, the database, you know, equipment that we need to be able to work from home, you know. You know, we needed to buy power leads for the phones so that we could, you know, um, work remotely. Um, I've needed a mouth and a mat to work with the, with the laptop. Um, and so, you know, there's been, you know, various, I, I mean, there's, there's quite a sundry list of things. Um, and, you know, we've, we've actually really quite quickly gone through that initial £5,000. So, um, I mean, there hasn't, apart from my hours, there hasn't really been anything unreasonable. And I just, I would, I'd just like to recommend that we allocate a further £5,000 to that fund and, and, and review it again. I mean, hopefully, sort of, you know, the, the most of the expenditure that we've needed to be paid out has, has, you know, that, that, there's sort of one-off costs that won't need to be repeated. But, um, you know, these are extenuating circumstances and, you know, there are out of pocket costs, costs that we sort of at the moment, you know, quite often don't even know that we need to spend them. But, you know, even little things like paying £12 so that we can have Zoom conferences that last more than 40 minutes, for example. Do you know, there's all sorts of miscellaneous that we wouldn't normally have had. Yes, Chris?
I propose that.
Well, I need, yeah, I need to ask a question on the overtime, Deborah. Apart from you, which I guess we might be discussing, who, and, and I know Cathy has done hours on the help line. Are there any other members of staff you are expecting overtime for? Or if you don't know off the top of your head, can you ever think about it and send something out?
Um, I, I think Cathy would like to answer that.
Okay. Um, hi, yeah, um, I've received everybody's, um, time sheets now, or, um, they've told me what's on them if I haven't received them. Um, and the other person apart from myself is Gemma, who did an awful lot of work, extra hours last week.
And it's. I'm not sure if I'm muted or unmuted. Have you got, when you say an awful lot?
Yeah, so, um, she, we asked for the last two weeks, which is when it's been, hasn't it really? So she did, she does, she does 40 hours. So she did eight and a half hours in the first week, extra. And then she said she's done 35 hours in this week that were on. She worked during the weekend, she worked from midnight, getting the badges done and everything. So that's a huge, I mean, you know.
Yeah, that again is a cause for, are you saying she worked her 40 hours plus another 35 hours?
I just checked that with her tonight. So last week, or this Sunday, yesterday, she's seven, um, 75 hours.
Yeah, you see, that is a, uh, something that concerns me greatly because we should not, even in this crisis time, we should not be asking people to work 75 hours in a week. I know she was putting in the, um, I mean, she's been entering the data for the volunteers, hasn't she, and doing their part?
And, and the badges took a lot of time, I believe. Um.
So I think.
Now.
Yeah, hopefully that is it. But I think.
Yeah.
Deborah, we need to be, you know, you, you are responsible for them as I'm responsible for you. And that's a worry, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it is a worry. And, um, you know, now that, now that we're, you know, I, I feel, as I said to you earlier, Rachel, I feel like, you know, we've, we've been climbing a mountain. Um, and, and I feel like we've kind of, we've kind of got to the top of the mountain now. We can sort of start to see a, a bit of daylight and there's going to be an opportunity for us to start, you know, to be able to take some time back. So, you know, for Gemma, because her, for all of us, because we're now set up working at home, it's actually really hard not to just sit there and keep working. So, you know, we, we're going to have to develop new practices where, you know, we, we have very set hours and we, we don't, outside of those hours, we don't work. But, um, you know, we've, we've all been pulling out all the stops to get to where we are now. And I think we're at a place where we can sort of start to take a step back. Yes, Cathy?
Yeah, and I think, um, just to point out that, um, certainly for myself and Gemma, it's taken a bit of time. Uh, some of that time is actually trying to set up, get things working. Um, I've had some IT, uh, IT issues and waiting for our tech people to ring back and then certain things, you know. So obviously some of those hours were that as well, certainly with myself. And I think Gemma's had some similar issues. But once that's sorted, which it kind of is now, it's there, I, I'm definitely sorted now. You know, that, that will not happen again because it's a one-off thing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, so we need to make sure that we don't have people working 75 hours or use the equivalent. Because then we as councillors are not giving our job. But anyways, um, we've all got that message, I think. Anyone else want to talk on this subject?
We're voting?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if I'm linked in actually.
You are, Warwick, I can hear you. Um, do you vote in favour of putting some more money in the pot?
I vote in favour, but the, the main thing I would vote is we have a steering committee.
Yes, we've done that.
Maybe everyone who I've heard should go to the steering committee who will make the recommendation. We're trying to do their work for them.
Yeah, okay. So, um, I, I think that was a, a majority voting in favour of adding another £5,000 to the pot. Thank you.
Okay.
Excellent.
Next one, item seven.
Um, Rachel, before, before we move on totally on that, can I just say, I've had quite a lot of discussions with Peter today. Um, and he is struggling technologically. Um, he does have a smartphone, but EE have set up his phone for him because of his disability. And they can't, he can't access the app store at all, which is why he's not able to join us on this meeting. Unless he takes his phone down to the EE shop. Now, obviously he can't do that. His, um, his computer doesn't. Won't download either. So I'm just wondering if there is any way that, um, that the council have a spare iPad or something similar? Or an iPad can be purchased for him, sorry, another cat, um, so that he can at least take part in the meetings.
Well, he clearly needs to take part in the meetings, doesn't he? Deborah, do you have some thought about the equipment?
Um, I, I think probably the best thing to do is for us to consult with our IT specialist to see what we can, what we could do. I mean, I do think that actually we have, we have a duty to make sure that he can participate. Um, and, you know, we, I mean, there's nothing to say that we couldn't purchase an iPad or something similar. Obviously it would remain, um, the property of the council and it would be his to use while he was a councillor or, or for the duration of this. And then it comes back to us and we can perhaps use it in-house. You know, when things return to some semblance of normality, I won't say back to normal, because I don't think we're going to know what that is anymore. But, um.
That's, that's.
But.
I'd like to say something. Some councils already provide those iPads.
Yes.
Um, for the councillors anyway, so it wouldn't be something that's not done already in place.
Yeah, that, that's what we did in Des, we, we bought iPads for councillors. Because then it meant that we could go over to electronic agendas and the councillors had, you know, they were able to, to bring the agendas on the iPads.
Also.
Yeah, sorry, yes, man, go ahead.
To avoid paper waste, also some councillors chose to do that. Um, in order to, um, be more environmental and saving the paper.
Yeah, and that's definitely something I think this council could look at in the longer term.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Chris?
Well, I was going to say, when we purchased the printer, the Samsung printer in the office, we received a Galaxy Tab, um, with that. And I wonder where that is, because that would be ideal.
I suspect that Gary's using that, isn't he, Cathy? You're, you're muted, Cathy. Unmute, unmute, unmute. Cathy, you're muted. Just realised. You want to start again?
Just can't remember what I said. Okay, um, yeah, um, I believe that he had one to begin with, which may have been this Galaxy one, but I, I don't know, because that was. But then we had to buy another one for him, because that wasn't working. So he's one now, it's a different one.
Right.
Um, I'm not, I mean, I, I'm not sure, well, he's, he's probably not using it at the minute. Oh, oh, he will be, won't he? He's still doing, he uses it to his safety checks, takes it around with him. And he's still doing, yeah.
That's all right. We can, we can work with Adam to see what we can, uh, what, what device we could look to get for, for Peter. Perhaps I'll report back to the steering group.
Put myself back on mute.
Is that, is that, is that acceptable to everyone?
Yeah, we need particularly because of Peter's, um, you know, disability, we need to make sure that he is not disadvantaged.
Yeah, John, John wanted to speak.
Yeah, just make sure you consult Peter as to what device you get for him, so he's happy with it.
Okay, yeah, that's fair enough. Okay, thank you. Okay, next item, Rachel. Rachel, would you like to move on to the next item?
Yeah, the ongoing saga of your successor. Since I'm not involved in this, um, could you fill us in? I, I've become aware, reading this, that candidate four has declined. That's all I know.
Yes, so, um, following the, the round robin emails last week, where it was clear that everybody supported the proposal for candidate four, um, I contacted her on Friday morning to say that we wanted to offer her the position and was extremely disappointed to get a lukewarm response from, from her. Um, I think that she indicated that, you know, with everything going on at the moment, she wasn't sure that now was the right time to be changing jobs. And, you know, I think things had changed quite considerably, perhaps with her current employment. Um, and she asked if she could have the weekend to think about it. Which, so she emailed me, um, last night and said, um, um, that, you know, she'd decided that now was the right time to move. So, um, really, I just wanted consensus that, um, we now offer the position to candidate one, who was the, uh, the existing qualified clerk. Mick, would you like to speak?
Yeah, um, it's, it's a shame about candidate four, but previous to interviewing her, we had agreed that candidate one would be our choice. And it was only subsequently we invited candidate four in for interview and she did extremely well. So I think we should offer the job to candidate one. She was very competent. Um, it's just that candidate four seemed to be a better candidate. Uh, and that does not necessarily detract from candidate one.
Tom?
Yeah, could we have some timings on all of this potentially?
I think Andy was before me. The Andy speakers, obviously, was on the interview.
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
Hey, thank you very much. Yeah, I, I would certainly agree with that. Um, candidate one was the winner until we, um, we only had three people that we shortlisted, simply because one person failed to turn up. So we felt that we would have a, ought to have a fourth. The fourth, uh, we were really surprised was, was, was really a good people person. So Mick, I think it was unanimous, wasn't it, Mick, with the three of us that we favoured? We didn't, we went back through the scoring and everything and, and she was certainly the, the right choice. But I did think at the time, if this virus developed, at the moment, she's in a stable job at a school. She probably, um, it's, it's the wrong time to jump ships, really. I, I think she's going to be better looked after staying at that school. Um, if the school is closed, she'll, she'll be paid. So I kind of saw it coming as things developed the next week, unfortunately. One thing that I just want to throw in, James is on the call, but he can't, I don't think, he, he enabled his microphone, so he can't speak. He did call me this afternoon and, and suggested, was it possible that we could contact, um, the lady from the, the previous round that didn't accept the job because of the timings, um, of when our meetings were? Is it worth just asking her again if, if she has any interest? So, sorry to sort of throw that in. I'm really throwing it in on behalf of James, who's unable to speak.
Um, Tom?
Yeah, I, I did send an email and I was probably, I, I was quite happy to, to have, give candidate one a, a, a chance if she would commit to moving to Newmarket. And obviously things have moved on from there. But the other side of that is, I, are we really in a position to actually take somebody on with what's going on at the moment? How is this person supposed to ju- jump into a Newmarket Town Council that's in the midst of this crisis? We're dealing with all of this and you're then expecting someone new to come and jump in? Is it not a good time just to say, suspend this until once this virus or this, this actual process has settled down and we're back into a normal regime? Because I just don't think you're going to get anybody that, that, as in candidate four, who's going to leave a job or even be looking for a job at this time. So I would, I would think, you know, my, my view would be to just to sus- suspend the, the actual process until we're back into a, a stable situation, which obviously then leads on to the next agenda item about Deborah's contract.
Um, Chris?
I was going to echo that sentiment. Do we need to be thinking about appointing someone now? Because I don't think the time's right. But certainly to be appointing second choices if we don't have to. If we can hang on to you for the time being and see where we are in, in two or three months.
I couldn't agree more.
Person would be, how could they come in and we expect to stop them up if we're homeworking?
Yeah. Can, can I just respond to that? So, um, the first point I would make is that if we don't appoint now, then we're going to have to go through the whole recruitment process again. Um, and I was thinking that if we did offer the position to somebody, it would be on the basis that, you know, we would be looking for them to start once the dust has settled. But, you know, we sort of enter into a sort of a, um, an agreement that, um, you know, they, they, we would, we would, they wouldn't have a set start date, given the circumstances. But, you know, it then gives them an opportunity to, you know, perhaps, you know, be talking to their own, their current employer and, you know, sort of starting to think about putting arrangements in place for when things start to settle down and they can, you know, start to recruit to replace their own, you know, down the line, um, the current employer, which is a parish council in Kent, um, to give them an opportunity to recruit. So we wouldn't looking, be looking to appoint somebody who would then be coming to start here immediately or as soon as they can work out their notice. Because, um, I'm guessing as much as I'm needed here in this community, where I know, you know, lots of people and, you know, I've sort of got a handle on what's happening here, she's going to be equally as needed in the, in the community that she's in at the moment. So, um, you know, my concern is that, you know, we, if we don't offer the position now, I think we potentially could lose this candidate, who I actually think, um, would be, would be very, very good. Um, it was just that, you know, the, the candidate four superseded her, just simply because she had perhaps a stronger personality. Um, Mick?
No, I, I tend to agree with you. And to be honest, I, I think that what we should be doing is offering the post to her. Because I've got, she may turn around and say, now is not the time to move. Um, but I, I think she was a good enough candidate. We need in the long term, a, a, a town council manager. Yes, we can, or a town clerk, we can delay the start date, but I really do think we ought to offer the job in the first instance. If she turns it down, we start again and we can look at James's idea of the previous candidate, who I don't know, so I wouldn't be able to comment on.
I agree with that.
Chris?
I propose, I propose we offer her the job in those terms.
Okay, so, um, can we vote on that then? Please?
Deborah, can I just ask one question?
Yes.
Um, it strikes me from what has been said about this person whom I've not met, because I haven't been involved in the process, that if she's living in Kent and would have to move, when you talk to her, our timing might be a bit different, subject to your plans, which might be, look, originally we thought we needed you to give your month's notice or whatever and move up and, or see how it went. But we can probably be a bit more flexible. So it might be just Mick and Andy who interviewed her with you. What do you think about being a bit more flexible potentially on the, on the timings so that everybody can be suited? She may say no immediately, or she may say, you know, yes, I can't wait to come. But more likely it might be, well, if I've got, you know, I've got to move up, it might take a bit longer, which Deborah might suit you, might suit us, I don't know.
I think this is a conversation between Deborah and the candidate. I think she offers the job in the first instance and then negotiates what we do after that. Because these are so exceptional, that he's bound to have an opinion on when to start. I think that's a, I would delegate that discussion to Deborah.
And, and just to, to complicate matters, her name is Debbie.
Okay, so shall we vote on that then?
Yeah, well, we had, we had, we had a vote. I think most people voted in.
Yeah. Good idea.
Andy, you wanted to speak?
No, I, I was just going to agree that that seems a very straightforward thing to do. She's either going to agree or not agree. And a good thing would be if she does come up to the town council, she'll get to us in half the time.
Yeah, good. Okay, thank you. And I'll, I'll take that forward now. I'm confident that there was a majority vote. Thank you.
Yeah.
Rachel, are you ready to move on?
Yeah. Okay, so the last item is acting town council manager's contract to review in light of current circumstances and to approve this week's invoice for payment. The Deborah's contract is pretty straightforward. I've got it here.
Yeah, that, that was the document that I emailed to you during the meeting, for those of you who haven't yet seen it. It's, was attached.
This is the one dated the ninth of December.
Yeah.
Saying the payment, local clerk will be self-employed, payment will be at a rate of £30 an hour for three days per week, flexible around the needs of the council, plus mileage, rate for 100p a mile, et cetera, et cetera. So, well, I'm very concerned for Deborah about the amount of hours she is working. And I don't know, I mean, we haven't discussed your contract, Deborah, except to the extent that that was what worked at the time. And we cannot go back to you working this kind of hours that you were working. So do you want to speak about that?
Yeah, I mean, just to say that I certainly couldn't sustain these number of hours. It's not something I ever wanted to be doing. But, you know, obviously, as we've said on several occasions tonight, we are dealing with extreme circumstances and, you know, it has been very to, to work those hours just to get to where we are now. And, you know, we are at the sort of peak of the mountain now. So, I mean, I'm not saying that we've got easy times ahead, but I think, you know, we're over the, the worst in terms of the workload to get everything set up to where we are now. And I'm, I'm certainly hopeful that, you know, I can sort of start to cut, cut my hours back. But, you know, I'm only ever working now as it's necessary to get this job done and to get it done right and to get all the structure in place and to make sure that, you know, we've, we've got a system that works well. There's nothing worse than setting up something and then it falls flat because we haven't got all the right structures in place or we haven't, you know, done it properly. And, you know, we're going to do it, we've got to do it right, in my opinion. You know, obviously, other people might have a different view. But my intention is not to be working those kind of hours anymore. You know, as, as you can imagine, I'm exhausted. And, you know, I could take some time off. And, you know, as soon as it's practically possible to do so, there's just two or three items on my list of things that absolutely have to be done. And then, then I'm going to take some time off and I'm going to, you know, be working with staff to make sure that they pick some time off as well. Because that's not sustainable in the long term and we are in this for the long haul, I think, for the foreseeable future. Chris?
Yeah, in view of that, I do think we have to, we have a duty of care over our staff and we have to think about you. But these are exceptional circumstances and you've achieved an amazing amount in the time. And I think we're very fortunate. I have one thing, I, on the email yesterday, there's something I don't agree with. I think if you do any hours above, whatever hour you put in should be paid at the £30 an hour rate. I don't believe you need to cut that. Because we're certainly not making this, these decisions on a financial basis. We want you to be secure in the knowledge of the work you're doing is appreciated and needed. And, and that's all really. I propose that we pay you £30 an hour for all your additional work.
Can I add something to that, please?
Yeah, go ahead, Jasmine.
When a new manager is recruited, town clerk, that person is not going to accept £20 for any extra work that she is going to take. And for that reason, I think that is very unfair from us to, even to think about, to be honest, to, to say just £20 an hour. And on the other hand, if you think that working those hours that maybe twice, twice as what you normally work are too much for your wellbeing and you, you're, you're a grown up, you're able to say that it is too many hours. So until you decide that you cannot work those hours, those should be available and, and opt to you whether you want to work 10 hours more, 15 hours more. And at a point where if you say, well, I can't, then it should be your choice. At the moment, I, I work from home on a temporary position and I also do homeschooling. That's one of the reasons that I could not get more involved with, with helping. And so I, I know that I am doing about double the hours that I would normally do in a default circumstances. So if you think you can do too, we would, we couldn't be any happier. But at the same time, since a new town clerk is not going to accept £20 per hour for extra work, nor should you.
Thank you, Yasmin. Can I just clarify that I'm self-employed and I'm a consultant to the council? I'm not an employee of the council. Whereas the new town clerk would be an employee and would be on a contract based on, on an agreed annual salary, which was based on what's the, the sort of the, based on national guidelines in relation to the type of work. So it's a slightly different circumstance, but I very much appreciate the sentiment. Thank you.
Is this some, is this something, Debbie, where you could, could put a proposal forward?
Can I?
Sorry, Warwick, I think Warwick was just speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry, was it?
Well, I actually, well, I'm hoping that councillors can, can perhaps have a bit of a discussion first and then we'll see how, how it pans. So yeah, Tom would like to speak.
Yeah, I just, I just think, you know, we have to understand that the last couple of weeks have been, have been difficult for all staff. They've had to do a hell of a lot of work out of hours to set up what we now can see has been a great benefit to our residents and our community. As Deborah said, we've got to the top of the mountain and hopefully all those extra hours that she's put in to get us there, within the next few weeks should actually hopefully drop off and she can get back to a, you know, a normal 24 hours a week. Yes, there may be some times after that, that something, an emergency comes in that needs to be dealt with and she needs to do some additional hours. But, you know, she's not, I would hope that, you know, she's not going to be working 50, 60 hours continually because that wouldn't be good for her. And, and over the next few weeks, we can see that that hourly, hourly rate would drop off. The same for Cathy and the same for Gemma, and we get back to a sort of where we were previously. But we have to accept that there are going to be some emergencies that are coming in during this time because things are changing weekly, daily, that they need to work some additional hours. And the rate of pay that, that we are paying, Deborah, as far as I'm, should stay the same. Because, you know, me, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to start dropping wages, you know, I'm sort of, boy, I don't work. There's no racing at the moment, there's nothing for me to do. But we can't expect someone who's, who's put all this effort in to then suddenly tell them and say, actually, we're going to pay you less now. So, you know, I think we've got to look at it. At the moment, we've had to get all this set up. It's taken a lot of time and effort. We, we're paying for it and we can see the benefits of it. And in the long term, Deborah's possibly going to be in that position for the next three months. So, you know, as a council, we've got to give her some confidence that we're supporting her in all the efforts that she's put in over this, over this time. The same for Cathy, the same for Gemma. So, you know, I don't, I don't really have any, any issues or problems with actually keeping Deborah on the same rate of pay that, that she has at the moment.
Agreed.
I agree.
Ollie?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Were you, were you just agreeing or did you want to speak?
My thumbs up.
There's a problem with your microphone, Ollie.
Just agree, Ollie, then we can move on.
It's fine, don't worry.
Okay.
Can I just make a point, please?
Yeah, go ahead, Ian.
I certainly agree with everything that's been said about your hourly rates. I mean, it would be something unique in the industry for somebody to do overtime and actually earn less on overtime than they do on their normal rate. But also, Deborah, just to actually understand about your contract at the moment, is it coming to an end and does that need to be renewed or is it a rolling contract? Because I'm concerned, we're doing such a fantastic job at the moment. We're not sure when the new town clerk might be able to start, maybe in three months, four months, six months, eight months, we don't know. What is your position in terms of rolling, rolling your current contract forward?
So it's not coming, it's an open-ended contract, really. There's no, if, if you read through it, there's no, like, termination clause. You know, it would just finish when, when it became apparent that my services were no longer needed because you've got somebody new in post. You know, and my intention was, was, you know, as soon as somebody was in post and we had their feet under the table and, you know, we've all, you know, planned a good, smooth transition, that I would then move on. But I, I think the, the reason just for having this on the agenda really was because the current contract is for three days a week. And clearly, you know, I've been doing a lot more than that. And I just wondered if council, council wanted to review that and perhaps amend it slightly just to sort of perhaps make it a little bit more open, given the current circumstances. And, and also, while I've just got the floor, I was going to suggest that perhaps I could work much more closely with the steering group in terms of, you know, sort of workload and what I need to do and making sure that that's kind of kept tabs on. And if I am working extra hours, it's understood exactly why and what I'm, what I'm doing, sort of. It's been such a mad dash the last couple of weeks. There hasn't really been time to even sort of stop and talk about what it is I'm doing. I've just been getting on and doing it. I mean, I do, I've got pages and pages and pages and pages of notes. And I'm sort of constantly referring backwards and trying to bring everything together. Chris, you wanted to speak again?
Yeah, I just wanted to propose that we give you the authority, we pay you at the, the full rate and we leave it to you to manage your workload in consultation with the steering committee.
I second that.
And what about, what about the, the current contract then, which is for three days a week?
To extend that how you see fit, that you can do additional hours. Do you want to amend that so that you're doing five days a week?
I, I think it's probably best to keep it at a.
Flexibility to.
Yeah, I just think flexibility. I think it's better to keep it at the core, three days a week. Because in an ideal world, that's what I would be working for you.
Yeah, and that's what I'm proposing, that you make the decision if you need to do extra hours and you make the decision to back off when you, when you're able to.
Okay.
I second that.
Yeah, that's good, is that.
So is anybody else to want to add anything before we take a vote? No?
Let's just take a vote.
Okay, so can we, can we have a vote on that proposal, please?
I'll support it certainly, yeah.
Good, thank you, Warwick. Yeah, I, I think that's, that's, I'm happy that's a majority. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
Lovely. Thank you very much. One item that's not on the agenda would be, is, is date of the next meeting. I, I feel like this has been a really, really useful meeting. Thank you so much, everybody, for giving us your time. Would you like to sort of consider another meeting in a week's time or should we, should we, we're meeting as and when required?
I would leave it as every Monday for the foreseeable future. And if we need to hold, hold an ad hoc emergency meeting, we can add it in if we need to. But every Monday would be great.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes, great idea.
I have a suggestion. I, I agree with that, having a, a Monday. And if people are not able to make it, it's not going to go mandatory as opposed to town council meeting. There is no mandatory attendance. So we should definitely arrange that for every Monday evening.
Okay. So.
Shall we vote on that?
Yeah, that would be a good idea if you could just all vote on that, please.
Yeah, let's vote on that.
Yeah. Brilliant. Thank you. I think that's a majority. Thank you very much. So.
Yes, so sorry, I just need then to clarify that everybody needs to be aware that until we get the legislation in place, the, your note at the top, Deborah, applies. So we need to be aware that the, that these are, as you have put, it's a virtual meeting of the councillors. It's not a formal meeting. It's a secondary legislation that would permit this is still waited for. And therefore, all these meetings will be the equivalent of workshop meetings. And what did you go and say? The purpose of this meeting is to reach a consensus on decisions needing to be made and to make recommendations of next legally convened meeting of the council and permit the acting town council manager to proceed with confidence using delegated powers and in collaboration with the appointed councillors. So can we ask you to, as soon as that legislation comes out, which hopefully will be very soon? Am I right in thinking it has come out for higher levels of councils?
I'm, I'm not clear. The primary legislation, I think, provides the opportunity for the secondary legislation to do that. I mean, I don't think the primary legislation goes into the detail that we need. But if somebody's got the time to have a look and just double check, NALC will be, it will be feeding that information down as soon as it's available. And I kept yesterday on the NALC website and, you know, they're indicating that they're still waiting on guidance from the government on that.
Okay, well, hopefully we'll get it soon.
Yeah.
Where we are properly.
Yeah, we will have to sort of have the usual time. So, you know, if, if, if the ruling comes through on, you know, Monday, well, you know, I can get an agenda out by the end of Tuesday so that we can actually have a formal meeting in the usual way. It would just be that we're meeting here as a Zoom meeting. So we're still going to have to go through the same procedures. And we also need to make this meeting open to the public in order for it to be a legally convened meeting.
Okay, well, I'm sure that this is a good start and I'm sure going forward, we'll figure out how to do that. So thank you, everybody, and we'll hear from you, Deborah, then.
Yes, Cathy just quickly wants to speak. Don't forget to unmute yourself.
Talking about the, thinking about the rotor for tomorrow. Because we haven't really got one at this point, I don't think. But Chris, you said you could normally do eight till 12, but of course you won't set up first thing.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll do, I'll get him set up tonight.
Oh, right, okay. So would you, so Chris, are you able to do, just to clarify, eight till 12 tomorrow then?
So, yeah, I said eight till 10, but I could do eight till 12 if you like, yeah.
Oh, sorry, no, eight till 10, if that's what. Okay, if you do.
If you have a problem till 12, I don't mind.
Okay, that's fine. That would be good for tomorrow and then we can work out.
Yeah.
Then Mick at 12 till 2.
Yes, I can do that.
Okay. And then Julie at 2 till 4.
Yep.
And then myself at 4 till 6. And then I've got Sarah and John doing 6 to 8. Now, obviously, but in the rest of the time, we've got one person. And I think probably from 10 till 4, we could do with some other, with another person. I was wondering if Andy and Rachel, you could fill in at some point between them? Or we've got Christie as well, who could probably do some.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to.
So Rachel, I put you down for 10 till 12.
Could I do a later slot, actually?
12 till 2?
No.
Or 2 till 4?
2 to 4.
Andy, what would you be able to do?
Look, I'm, I'm looking at what Deborah sent out, where she said the helpline rotor.
the helpline rotor for today and tomorrow is as follows. And I was already gone.
Oh, was that for tomorrow as well? Sorry.
It says tomorrow, so yes. I'm very happy to do the slot that I'd already expected to do, which.
Which was 10 till 12, wasn't it?
Yeah.
But I would, I would like to take Ian off and give.
Then Ian's off that, yeah.
Yeah.
But, oh, sorry.
That would work.
Sorry, just one question, one point on that. I've found that the time from really about quarter past 20 past 8 through to 10 o'clock can be quite busy.
Really?
With the more elderly, they're sort of up and about on the phones earlier. So I would suggest ideally, if you can have two people covering that 8 to 10 slot as well.
I'll do 8 till 10 as well. I'm happy to cover 8 till 10.
All right.
I'll take a 2 to 4.
Andrew, your 2 to 4 is good again, that's. 2 till 6.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Sarah and John are available for the 6 to 8 slots.
Okay, so we've now got, in 2 till 4, we've got three people now. Julie, would you be able to do 12 till 2 instead?
Yeah, I think I can, yeah.
Yeah, and that'll work. I'll send an email round just to, thank you.
All right. Is there anybody else wants to say anything before we go?
Thank you very much.
All right, okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, good night. Good night.
Bye.